We got adjourned the work session.
Oh, that's fine.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Work session is adjourned. And I will call to order this meeting of the Festus City Council. Roll call please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total eight hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and one cent.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Remarks of visitors?
We have done, sir.
Bids?
We have done, sir.
Ordinances and resolution.
We have done, sir.
We will move into new business. Festival request. Emmanuel Lutheran Church.
He's out of town, so he sent in his email that I attached to your. Is it in there, Greg?
Yeah, it's, uh, so on July twenty-eighth, uh, they host a fun fest, uh, to conclude their vacation Bible school. Uh, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on North Third, uh, so they'd like to request a closure of Third from their daycare parking lot to the intersection at Brierton, and that would be from eleven until, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday, July twenty-eighth.
Any discussion? I will entertain a motion to approve the festival request for Emmanuel Church on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item of new business is a picnic license for Four Brothers Mead, their summer brawl on August tenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff reporting.
This is here.
Oh, okay, good.
That don't sound right. What brawl?
Yeah, a summer brawl.
So, uh, are you guys familiar with the, the guys that do, uh, the armored combat fighting at our festivals of St. Louis Legion of Honor? Uh, it's, it's out back of the, of the bar on Second Street there. So, uh, apparently a lot of their birthdays are in August. So they wanted to get together in August and beat the heck out of each other, I guess, down at Han, uh, for their birthdays. But so we're requesting a temporary liquor license, uh, just for that evening, August tenth, from four to nine, um, so that we can serve, uh, serve alcohol at their festival down there. Or at their, at their event down there.
And that's in the back of your, yours?
No, this will be, this will be in Han Fitness, uh, there. You know, a long time ago, it was the old Goodwill, uh, but right up from the corner cop there across from Pocalinos, basically. So we would be requesting a temporary liquor license there. I'll be coming to you guys in a few weeks with our festival application for Oc- for our October festival. But this is just for, uh, being able to serve alcohol during their event down at Han on August tenth.
All inside.
All inside, yes. Yeah, just, just one stand inside. As a matter of fact, I'll probably be working it, so.
Sure. Full control, give them a check, IDs.
Correct, absolutely. And I've already, uh, I've already sent off our paperwork to the state, so we don't have to, there's nothing else that needs to be done there. And as soon as I get the state paperwork back, I will go to the county.
Chief Wendell, you have any problem with it?
I have no issues with it.
So a liquor license to beat the hell out of everybody, huh?
I will.
I wouldn't be getting in there with them. My news won't take it.
I will entertain a motion to approve the picnic license for Four Brothers Mead on August tenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And we have one other, right?
Correct.
What do we call?
Uh, under new business, uh, this is for the SS four A application and a proposal from Trek Design Group. And I know Michael has some information he'd like to share.
Good evening. So we received a proposal from Trek Design Group for an estimated cost of what it would take for them to help us collect data and do part of the application for the SS four A. Our deadline is August twenty-ninth, which puts us a little under the gun on this. Otherwise, we would have to wait until well into twenty twenty-five. Funds can take up to two years, and so it, the longer we wait, the more it would drag on. And so we are working towards getting this proposal approved so we can get started on the data collection for the, uh, Safe Streets for All. Uh, with this, we would move ahead for an implementation grant from the federal government. Uh, with the implementation grant, you typically are looking to set up a action plan, a safety action plan. And so we would not focus on one singular area of the city. We would be looking at the city as a whole and request funding to take a look at any spots that come up from collecting data that strike us as unsafe, dangerous, or were collected from CBB engineers under Eastern US Gateway as part of their action plan that we're not allowed to use yet, uh, via the crash data that they collect.
Any discussion?
So when, um, decisions are made as to what be, what needs to be done where is that, um, is any of that grant money? Is any of it subsidized? Is it, is it a hundred percent out of the city? How is that, how would that be paid for?
It is a eighty-twenty split. Uh, something that we are going to try for is that if there is a particular area or prospect that looks like it would be a strong contender, uh, I know one of the options that has been given is to try and use an STP safety grant to then bolster any requirements for payment. And so we would use one grant to pay our match on another grant. And then as a city, just pay for the one singular match and therefore only have to pay one twenty percent amount one time.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, request for the SS four A. Um.
Grant application.
Grant application.
So moved. Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. All business.
We have done, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes, sir. I wanted to, uh, put out congratulations to, uh, the Parks Department and all those associated with it. Um, talked to Tim Lewis and his wife, and, uh, they had said that there was quite a turnout. It went real well. They were very impressed with it, and I heard that from several people. So congratulations to those, those folks for doing a fine job. What about tree blockage? Uh, we've got three or four. There's big fir trees at the end of, when you come out of Cherokee Lane and it comes out on, uh, this Maple Street, right? Not Maple, but, uh, the street that goes up. Comes out right there, and it's at the end of those apartments. And the first tree, if it was taken out, we could have visibility. But they stick so far out, it's really hard to see down that road. Uh, is there anything that we can send to the guy, ask him maybe to?
I think we need to make a determination as to, um, the loc- the exact location of the tree, where it is, whether it's in the right way or not. Um, and then we can see about working with the property owner to, to have it cut back.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, I've talked to several council people. I think we all had this, this issue with loud fireworks this year. They were extremely loud. Uh, a lot of people call them chest thumpers, but they were the real loud fireworks, big bang. You know, ain't so bad with the ones that goes up and create sparkles and all that kind of stuff, and even a little bit loud. But these things were horrible, and it went on, and it went on, and it went on. And they could just about duplicate what the Elks put off out there, maybe even more so. But there was a lot of houses in the region doing that. Is there anything that we can do about that? You know, I know before we've talked about it. Uh, if we could have even the local, uh, fireworks stand not handle those loud ones, I know they'd bring them in from other places. But, and it's the same thing we go over every year, but it's, I've noticed down there, they had one road blocked off. We should have had open. They had three cones down there, the street between South Adams and Glass Street, and that was just covered. Mike, did you guys have to clean that up?
They haven't said anything about what cleanup they had to do, but I do know that on call was called on Saturday.
It was bad. I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't have drove down it. It had stuff everywhere. So, you know, something needs to happen on this. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Weiner.
Well, it's that time of year when it's wet and flooded, although it's not normal for this time of year, and the river's rising and everything. So I was thinking about, uh, Rita Lovelace and, uh, you know, the levy project that was here. I don't know how many years ago that was, thirty plus years ago, whenever that was put in, and what a material effect it's still having on the community here. Because if it wasn't for that levy, um, sixty-one, sixty-seven down at Stoplight, that would all be underwater. Um, there would not be any safety vehicles be able to go. J-Pad wouldn't be able to get around because of, uh, detours they'd have to take. And it was, uh, Crystal, of course, was excessively underwater where the old post office and stuff used to be over there. So anyway, I thought it was really important to recognize, uh, Rita and Tom Lovelace at this time from, um, just from a historical point of view. Um, with Councilman Boyer talking about the fireworks, they were quite excessive. And, uh, yeah, I was out in my street looking at, looking at something that looked like it could have been coming from the Elks, too. Glad to see the Red Barn project going forward. Um, I think that's gonna be a nice addition when we get all that going. The pickleball courts were, were great. We had, I guess, ten plus days of, excuse me, uh, tournaments going on there. Um, there were a lot of people from a lot of places. Um, there were great crowds. Everyone was friendly, helpful, uh, very impressed with our new facilities. And, um, there's just a lot of people using those courts. Uh, Mr. Burger went over to turn the lights off at, uh, at ten the other night, and the, the courts were full, and there were people waiting to get on there. And, uh, they're mostly younger people, which are people that don't have things to do, which are now having things to do. So I think it's a, just a win-win for everybody. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Dennis.
Um, I kind of agree in fireworks. I, I think it's something that's hard to enforce. We'd have to have a hundred policemen. But my biggest problem was I was out that night trying to get home with my family. I had fireworks shot at me, thrown at me, and I had to stop several times in the local roads to wait for them. So they should not, should not be setting off anything in the road. But once again, I've talked to the chief. I talked to our past chief. It's really hard to enforce. So I think we need to take a look at that. Um, I, uh, talked to Greg and the chief today and, uh, didn't make it to Michael, but, uh, I talked to Bobby, uh, about putting a stop sign on Central somewhere around, uh, Huber or Woodrow, kind of in the middle of that stretch where, uh, we've had to patrol a lot just to maybe slow it down. And Greg sent me some information I have not got to review, but I just want to put that bug in the council's ear, uh, that, uh, I think it would help. I think it's a spot that maybe we can, if we get fifty percent of the people to stop, uh, at least that'll slow the other fifty percent down for a second. So, um, I think it's a doable thing. And but like I said, I just wanted to bring the whole council in. Doug's reviewing it, uh, Greg, and then Michael will probably tell us exactly where the exact spot to put it. Sorry, I didn't make it to you, Michael, today. I just ran out of time. So, uh, that's all I have, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, sir. Uh, to add on what Dave said, um, since we're throwing ideals out, just an idea, um, maybe we can pad the overtime budget for police and just offer overtime for the week of the fourth. Cause I agree with Dave and every other councilman, they shouldn't be blocking our roads. So if we get the word out and we have officers, extra officers on for that week or ten days, then people can call in and we have the patrol to actually start assisting and, and getting word out and making it a little more safe. Cause blocking the road is one thing. Dropping fireworks in our tennis courts, I'm assuming they weren't damaged. I didn't, we didn't get an update on it. But, uh, I saw, I had like ten people send me the same video over and over. So we're good there. No harm?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so as, I'm assuming Josh has looked at it or somebody's looked at it. We just put a lot, what, three hundred and forty thousand dollars in them tennis courts? Yeah, so that's disappointing. Um, Brian, do we need an ordinance on, don't shoot fireworks on city property? I know, I know it sounds stupid, but I mean, I'm a little shocked that it happened and, and B, I, I don't know what the outcome of the situation was.
I think you probably need to have an ordinance, yeah, clarifying that either you can't shoot them within the city limits or within any defined area or anything like that. Um, as the, has been alluded to, it, it is difficult to enforce, but there are ways to do it, and you can, uh, I, I think an ordinance is a good place to start.
Greg, can you work on that where you can't shoot fireworks on tennis courts or whatever terminology come up with?
We can certainly restrict the areas that they're, um, you know, it's, it's time and place. Uh, we can, we can put restrictions on that. I think it's worthwhile considering, I know with some of the conversations I had, uh, today, uh, the window that we have for fireworks to be available, uh, for sale, and then there's the window that we have where fireworks can be shot off just anywhere. If, if, if we want to, um, choke that down a little bit, um, I think Dave probably hit the nail on the head. And we could, we could close every fireworks stand in town, and they'd still shoot them off in town. So I don't know if that's the, the route we need to take, but, um, we can certainly make it to where, um, uh, we can put a little more protection over city facilities, especially given, as you mentioned, the investment that we've, we've made in some of these of, of late.
I, I just think if somehow we can get the word out with some assistance from the leader or anything, if you're gonna keep being irresponsible, we have no choice but to start being more restrictive, and that's no fun to anybody. I don't want to sit up here and babysit. I know, chief, you've got better things to do. But come on, I mean, they're damaging our tennis courts now, but that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Collier.
Okay, staying with the fireworks. I had a citizen suggest to me, why don't we do it like we do on Halloween and blow the whistle, and you can shoot them off and blow it again whenever you gotta quit? I don't know if that'll work or not, but that was their suggestion.
Sounds really good in theory.
Yeah, it does. All right, I've got a subject here that I've been thinking about for a while. It's gonna be very, very unpopular. I've noticed whenever I'm at a red light, there's cars going through there. Whenever your light's green to go, there's cars still going through it. I don't know what we can do to eliminate that. I know we've had a few accidents from people running red lights. I just don't want to see anybody getting killed, and I don't know what the situation or what we can do to keep people from doing it. Uh, I don't know, cameras, I know that's a very unpopular thing, but is that something that we need to look at? Now, another thing, too, is is it up to us or the state on somebody's stoplights to put the cameras and stuff up? I don't know.
Brian might be able to address this. I know the, the law has changed, uh, you know, it, Arnold had a number of them up, and they were taken down. Um, but I believe the law has changed a bit.
Well, there, there was a series of Supreme Court decisions in two thousand fifteen that essentially ended the practice of using red light camera, um, for, uh, traffic enforcement, um, as it was currently being conducted. A few other cities, um, have, have continued to do so in a way that, um, that they've contended contend or, uh, is consistent with those Supreme Court decisions. And one of the big issues is, for instance, under the old system, you couldn't identify the driver. Everything was based on your license plate number, and so you'd have situations where someone who was not the owner of the car was driving it and getting a ticket. Um, and, and that, that is no longer going to work. You need to be able to identify the driver. I believe the city of St. Louis and Hannibal and a few other places have reinstituted a program, um, that has the ability to identify the driver. Um, there probably still are some potential challenges out of the, out there, but I think in concept at least, that's something that, uh, cities have decided to explore and, uh, and that appears to comply with the, uh, with the Supreme Court rulings from several years ago.
Yeah, well, I think we need to do something, cause that, in my opinion, just for me being at the stop signs when I am, there's way too many people just blowing right through them. So I think we need to kind of start looking at something to what can we do to maybe slow some of this down so we don't have any fatalities?
Jim, can I add to that for a minute?
Sure.
The heading north, say in front of, uh, Walmart, you come up to that next set of stoplights, sixty-one, sixty-seven. You got two going straight, and you got one going to the left. The other day, we were back in the back coming up, but there was like four or five cars ahead of us. And the red light that shoots to the left never did turn green. It got bypassed twice. These people got fed up with it, and they started running the red lights. Four in a row ran that thing. So I don't know if Mo dot, Mo dot needs to come around and, and recheck their calibrations on these stoplights, but something needs to happen. You're right.
Uh, most of the ones I've seen is they turned yellow, then red, and then they blew right on through them. So they were working on the ones that I saw. But yeah, I, I agree that there is some, I know coming off American Legion Drive onto sixty-one, sixty-seven, there's times where that it bypasses you. But a lot of times it's cause the person is stopped back before they initiated, but anyway. Also, I have a resident, Mark, I don't, or I don't know if you're familiar with the Souths, is it South Second off of Henry? There's a house that's, the garage is all boarded up and everything. Is it? Um, I think, I don't think there's anybody living in it. Could you kind of take a look at that and let me know if there's anything we can do? The, the, the residence mom lives there, and he's a little concerned that there might be some people there staying in the house or whatever, or the house is gonna get run down and everything. And so I'd like to know if we could check into that, and I'll kind of get with you, show you where it's at. All right, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Templeton.
So just to reiterate what everybody else has already said, the Firework, Firecrack Festival was amazing. So the people in, people out, I was out there all day, and I did bail before the concert, and there was people lined up almost back to a highway to get in there. And I heard that getting out was not, uh, was not heinous. So great job by everybody. It was hot. Anywhere you went, it was hot. Barb almost melted, but it was a great show. The only thing I had was the house that is, that burned on North Mill, seven hundred block on North Mill. I think it's a seven hundred block. Is, do, do we still have owners that are working on that property? Or they're struggling to keep the grass and everything else? Guys, just kind of curious.
Yeah, they still have an owner, uh, we've posted several times. I think actually the neighbor across the street comes over and mows it. Um, the house is secure. Uh, there's, there really not a lot we can do about it. It's nothing illegal about it, but.
Is it gonna, no, they were just curious because I know that the homeless situation is kind of an issue. I'd not heard that. It was just the grass the last time was, was super tall. Are they planning to, is that a tear down? Is that a rebuild? Is that?
He's working to fix it.
Okay. That's it?
Thank you. Councilman Vins.
Yeah, and on that concert note, that was a great, great concert, good Fourth, you know, at the Kreutz Park and everything. And I, and I kind of agree like with Mike on, uh, if there's a way to give some extra police patrols. I know we're not gonna stop fireworks on Fourth and New Year's Eve. That's something we did, and I know they're gonna be loud, but we got to do something the day after, the day after, the day after. I mean, it, these people just don't stop this stuff. And even a week before, that's where we get the complaints, cause it's like a lot of them are gonna live with the Fourth of July. They already know it. It's gonna happen. It's the day after, people's gotta get up and work. That's the problem. We need to have the extra patrols stopping these people that, hey, go somewhere out of town somewhere to, to do this.
I mean, with that, we always have taken the kinds of, first off, if we get a call or complaint, we will go and address it.
Right.
We've always been kind of, hey, knock it off. We don't want to hear it anymore and leave. If we have to come back, we would cite them. So that would be an issue if you guys wanted us to cite people on the very first time that, you know, that's something we could do. But a lot of that relies on people that call us to come and do something about it in, in the first place, so.
Yeah, it, the reoccurring ones that you gotta keep going back to, that's the.
Those are the ones we'll definitely issue. If we go once and tell them, hey, knock it off, you know, it's not supposed to be shooting them today, or had to quit at whatever time or that, if it's on the Fourth. You know, we try to give them a warning at first, and then if we have to go back, that's whenever we'll normally start issuing a citation for it.
Right. I, I mean, cause like, like everybody said, Fourth was, it was loud. I mean, I mean, that new neighborhood everywhere, I, I mean, even I was loud, but it, it was the Fourth, but after ten o'clock, give and take, we were done. And, and a lot of places did calm down, but you still have those stragglers. I understand that, but it's especially after the Fourth. I mean, I know some before, but man, it's, that's what we gotta control in this town is the people that are abusing the privileges that we let them have on the Fourth and stuff. And, um, but no, I said, as far as the concert and everything, I'm glad we had a great concert crowd. I heard a lot of great things about it and stuff, and so, and, uh, it was really, I was glad to get back in time from Florida to enjoy all that, so. Um, uh, the other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tenon.
Might as well add on to the fireworks, too. Um, so, I mean, there's such a thing as legal fireworks and illegal fireworks, I think. I mean, I think it was Saturday. Uh, over there by where I live at the Meadows, um, they were shooting off rockets and everything. That's pretty normal. And then Doug, I don't know what they're shooting off. It sounds like a, I don't know if they're propane bombs or something like that. It just shakes your whole frigging house.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm up there painting, and about, I, I almost flew off the ladder because it scared me so bad. And, uh, and that went on most day. They only did that about four times, but that, that's ridiculous there. Um, I, I believe that the rockets and all the special fireworks are getting bigger and bolder every year. But, um, I mean, i- if I remember, we set an ordinance that Fourth of July only, right?
Yep.
I mean.
And New Year's.
Right, right. But I mean, it's, it's like, uh, you know, I took it where I didn't want to bother the police department because I knew that you guys are busy enough. But then, uh, I started getting phone calls. What can we do about this? And it's like, I, I don't know what kind of excuse I can make up because, you know, maybe we should be putting ads in the paper. We should do something that, a reminder that it's illegal. I don't know. Um, and then the tennis courts, uh, there's a lady that lives across the street. She calls me and says that they're, uh, doing fireworks on the, uh, tennis courts, and then my daughter showed me pictures of it. I mean, that's a painted surface. It's, I mean, would we be excited about going to our new pickleball courts and lighting them off over there? I mean, would we be excited about going to our new pickleball courts and, and lighting them off over there? I mean, between the fireworks, the bicycles, the skateboards, and everything is destroying the city property. I don't even know why we're, uh, excited to build new things, that we can't control what's going on with the existing things. That's the problem I have. And then, uh, uh, I got a lot of this stuff tonight, guys. But I call, I think this could be last one. But, Michael, over there on, uh. Hawk Point, I, I've kind of complained about this several times, but when we come off Sunshine, that first curve to the right. The brush is just out there, it's, it's already probably ten feet from the street, but there is such a blind area right there that. I can't believe there hasn't been more wrecks than there has been there. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm not sure I do.
So, so if you're going into Bailey Station from the backside by Kreutz Park, as soon as you turn off Sunshine and go onto Hawk Point. Um. You go past my entrance onto, uh, the Meadows, and then you're going to Bailey Station. That first curve right there, you can't see the cars coming the other direction because it's protruding out there. But it's not in the roadway, but it's still, the curve is so sharp, you can't see nothing. Um. Other than that, though, uh, I think that's all I got. Oh, Barb, great job on the, the, I, I had, uh. Since I live over there, I see a lot of people going in and out, and I mean, everybody seemed like they're having a great time, and, uh, the concert. Um, some of my kids in the area, they got autographs and everything, so they're all excited about that, and, yeah. Other than that, that's all I got, guys.
All righty, thank you. Well. Between. Barb, Chief Wendell and his guys, Chief Brimball and the fire departments. Josh and, and his crew, Eric Pruno and his crew, Zach and his crew. I've heard a lot of good things about the golf carts. People were really. Happy about that. That was a good decision. That was a good decision. I was fortunate enough to get to meet Mr. Atkins, uh, thank you, Barb. Uh, before his concert, and I asked him, uh, straight out, has. Have you been satisfied with everything that we have done for you while you're here? He was just tickled to death. It was great. Uh, he was happy to be here, and it wasn't just. Talking to him was like talking to any of you all. It was just. A good experience for me. I mean, I don't. You know, I've met some people before, but. He gave me a, a guitar pick where it has his name on it, and of course, he was throwing them out to the audience. He signed a lot of autographs. And then, uh, he reached in his back pocket and he says, here, I'm gonna give you something. I always carry this with me, and, uh, I want to give it to you, and he gave me a little cross. That said, God loves you on it. And, uh, he was a down-to-earth person. I was really, uh, really impressed with him. So you did a good job on that bar, uh, bar of getting him here. That's all I have, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.